Welcome everyone to the 2015 A U W School Board Candidates Forum. The mission of A U W is to advance equity for women and girls through advocacy, education, philanthropy, and research. One way in which the Hastings A U W branch promotes this mission is to host school board candidate forums. Our branch has hosted these events for over thirty years. We feel there is no better way to inform both our membership and the community at large about the issues facing our public schools. As Glenda Schneering so aptly noted, A U W is pro-public education. This means that we have a great responsibility to encourage voter turnout. These forums also provide the candidates an opportunity to express their views and to convince us as to why we should vote for them. With that, I'll turn the meeting over to Jan Hurtel.
Preparing students for life in the 21st century is more complex than at any time in the past. The school board is the group which sets the policies that govern a school district. We are fortunate in Hastings to have several candidates interested in taking on this challenge. The school board has the task to set a vision of the future, to define goals, and to set outcomes for the district. They do this by coordinating with the superintendent, the staff, the broader community. The board determines how to wisely use the tax dollars to support the education and to serve the 4,700 students currently in the Hastings schools, as well as the 28,000 community members. We will be electing one person for a two-year term and four people for four-year terms. Let's welcome the candidates and learn more about them and their ideas for the coming years in the Hastings schools. Tonight, the forum, each candidate will have two minutes to answer their questions. The order in which they're seated has been decided by random selection. The candidates will start by introducing themselves, answer two questions in addition, and then a concluding remark at the end. So at this point, if I can introduce to you our candidates, we first on to my right there all the way down, we have Ms. Lisa Hadid. Number two is Vince O'Brien. Number three, Russ Roloff. Number four, Andy Bertram. Five, Valerie Howell. And number six, Joe Becker. So, at this point, Ms. Hadid, if you would like to come up, and I'll read you the introductory question. The question is, "To please tell us a little bit about yourself and why you are interested in the position on the Hastings School Board."
Thank you very much. Okay. So, that's a two-minute and eight-second song, so I chose not to bring it to conclusion, but I did have that request after the last meeting. And I have the feeling that nobody here is gonna rest until I at least do a little bit. I feel like I don't know how to introduce myself to this group, only because I've had the opportunity to be so active with it. So what I thought I would do is characterize what I think are the elements of a good school board member, and then just highlight quickly where I align to those. So, first is experience. I'm serving at the end of a four-year term on the school board. I also served as a federal engineer in the Corps of Civil Engineers and worked on multimillion-dollar, multidisciplined, multi-financed coordinated projects. I, advocacy for education. I've actively lobbied both of our state representatives with regard to safe routes to schools and school funding. I work in junior achievement. I mentor with a middle school lunch bunch. I've served on PTAs at two elementary schools, thanks to a redistricting in the middle of my kid's elementary career. I was on the ECF advisory board prior to the school year, or prior to their school career starting. And then engagement in community. I'm active in A A U W, YMCA board, Carpenter Nature Center, youth sports, moms' clubs. So, again, I just want to thank you for hosting this forum, both A A U W and Hastings Community TV, and just share those few minutes to introduce myself to the group. Thank you.
Mr. O'Brien?
Hi. I'll echo Lisa in thanking A A U W, as well as Hastings Cable Television, for this opportunity and for the forum. I live across the street, lived in Hastings for twenty-five years, but I'm not from here. I'm from Little Falls, Minnesota. Education means a great deal to me, always has. I grew up on the west side of Little Falls, which is the wrong side of the tracks. I was the youngest of five boys. Our parents did not go to college, one of them didn't graduate from high school. I went to college and got my undergraduate degree, I got my Juris Doctorate as well. I spent twenty years in town as a firefighter and an EMT, working with Hastings Fire and Ambulance. I spent the last eight years on the school board, trying to understand the schools, learning about the schools, and trying to do what I could to help the schools go forward in a positive direction. I think that's really important, and I'll just say that the way I think schools are important comes up to a story that happened with my father about eight years ago. You know dads and moms can kind of read their kids. So I would go home once a month, and I would take care of my parents by phone and visiting with them as often as possible in Little Falls. This is when they were both still alive, they're both dead now. One day, my dad said, "Hey, what's wrong?" And I said, "There's something on the school board really bugging me. It's not very fun at all." And I was kind of short with him, and he said, "Well," he said, "is it worth doing?" And as usual, my dad, who was very rough around the edges, hit the nail right on the head. The school board's work is extremely important, in taking care of the 4,700 kids that Jan alluded to, and trying to have a fiduciary duty over the $50 million. Somebody's gonna be doing that job, and I think all these people are very good, but I think I do a pretty good job on it, and I'd like to continue to try to work at it, if possible. Thank you.
And Mr. Roloff?
All right. I might get nervous. Excuse me. I can talk in front of 500 people, but when it comes to talking in front of cameras and everything else, it's a little difficult for me. I'm Russ Roloff. I thank you for this tonight, for the A U W and Hastings TV. I'm employed by the local YMCA about nine years ago in Hastings, and actually now I'm a corporate person down in St. Paul, Minneapolis area, as a building engineer. I hold a bachelor's degree in facility management. So I work with building buildings and lots and lots of kids every day that we go through school, or not schools, I'm sorry, YMCA's and stuff like that. Currently, I am the vice chair of the Hastings Planning Commission, president of the Hastings United Way, I am vice president of Hastings Basketball Boosters, president of the Hastings Football Connections. In the past, I served on the Hastings Park Board, on the Hastings Lacrosse Club, and in 2009, I sat on the Facility Task Force for the Hastings School District. My wife, Lisa and I, we've lived here twenty years, and we have two children. My daughter's a senior, Callie, and I have a sophomore son, Corey. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody, for having us here and for the local TV, for bringing this to everybody else in town who's interested in watching this. A little bit about myself, kind of like a couple of folks here, I didn't grow up in Minnesota. I grew up in Wisconsin, dad was a truck driver, mom was a teacher. And I think one of the things that they taught me from an early age is, you know, to work hard, go after it, if you can do it, it's worth having. And kind of like Vince alluded to as well, one of the things they wanted was to give me some of the opportunities that they didn't have, to make sure I was prepared to succeed in life, to go out above and beyond from an education standpoint. So I went to St. Cloud State, met my wife up here, and a couple of years ago, we moved back. And I think that's the most important job that we have as a school district, is just that, preparing our kids, making sure they're ready to do whatever it is they're destined to do. You know, four-year, I went to a four-year college, my wife went to a four-year college, and everybody in here did as well. But four-year college isn't always the best option for everybody. Sometimes it's trade school. There's a lot of very good paying jobs out there in various trades, construction, manufacturing. And I think our job as school board and as teachers and everybody else is to make sure that we're gonna be setting our kids up for success. So, yeah, there's gonna be a lot of people going to four-year, but for those who, college isn't a good fit for various reasons, I think it's our job to introduce some of the different opportunities that are out there, that they can succeed at, that they can support themselves and family and live the American dream. And I think that's extremely important, rather than sending everybody for four years in a huge load debt. I think, you know, if we're gonna improve the education system here, part of that is attracting different businesses here, those jobs, if they're gonna bring the people in town to fill those roles and increase our enrollment. And I think that all starts with us and that education system, and getting that good reputation. So, thank you, and looking forward to the debate.
One thing I should mention at this point, too. We mentioned that there are several four-year positions. Mr. Bertram is the only candidate going after the one-two-year position. So as you're going through choices in your mind, just know that that's the way that this breaks out then. So, Ms. Howell?
I'm Valerie Howell, and I was born and raised in Iowa. I have a husband, Sean, and two kids. Brittany is in college at University of Minnesota in Duluth, and Nathan is going to high school here in town. We have only been back in Hastings since December of last year, so this is Nathan's first time in the public school in Hastings. We did live in Hastings prior, in like 2002, for a few years, and at that time, my kids went to Pine Harbor Christian Academy. But we chose to move back to Hastings because we really loved the community here, and we're glad to be back. I do work for 3M. I've worked for 3M for nineteen years. That's brought us to five different locations, so we've kind of moved around. I'm a plant engineering manager, and education is really important to me, that is one of the reasons why I'm running. I do have a two-year degree, that was my first degree, in robotics automation, so I'm a strong supporter of technical colleges. And after I started work in the field and had a family, I went back and got my four-year degree and even a master's in business administration. I do have a very strong business background, so I'm not afraid to make difficult decisions when it comes to budget and things aren't personal, some, you know, I'm very good at looking at the numbers and analyzing that and making those types of decisions. I do sit on three different college boards, technical college boards. Again, I'm a big supporter of those because four-year degrees aren't right for everyone, but they are right for a lot of people. My daughter's going to a four-year college, too. My son will end up going to a two-year college. So I do sit on three different college boards. One of the things I would like to see improved would be the technical program here. I think we have a lot of really good people in place that want to make a difference, and I'd like to see us enhance that. Thank you.
And Mr. Becker?
Thank you for having me and these very good candidates. Very impressed by Hastings and all the members who've been on the board. And, you know, I didn't really, four months ago, if you would've asked me, "Why am I doing this?", I'd say, "I have no ambitions to be on the school board." I've always enjoyed Hastings. It's run very well, so many opportunities. But a teacher challenged me and said, "You know, you have a child that graduated, you've been through the whole system, you should consider it. And, you know, you seem to be a level-headed person." So, here's, here I am. So, we'll see how level-headed I am. Anyway, I'm Joe Becker, and myself and Joni are not from Hastings, so you may not know me, but you might know Joni. She's kind of the cheerleader of the family, and I'm kind of the calming influence. But we have three children. One, Lindsay, graduated from high school last year, is up in Bismarck. And two are in high school, Charlie and Mickey. I'm in construction. That's kind of another reason why I'm running. In construction, it's all about the bottom line on all the projects. We, when we build a project, it gets done. There's just no way of fans or butts. So I'm thinking, and I'm thinking this will transfer to being a good school board member. I've kind of just done things that my kids have done throughout the years as a volunteer, whether at church, or at the soccer fields, or at school. We're active with our kids in show choir and marching band, and I feel I'd be a good school board member. So, ask for your vote. Thank you.
Peggy, I'm gonna put a monkey wrench in your plans here. Otherwise, poor Mr. Becker has to answer two things immediately in a row, so the way we originally had this set up. So instead, Mr. Roloff, you'll be the one who will be leading off with our next question. And I think, to give you guys a moment to think about it, I'll even read it twice, so you've got some time to think up your answer. The question is, "Describe your top three priorities if elected to the District 200 Board, and how will you know whether those priorities are being met?" So again, just to give him a moment to think, describing your top three priorities if elected to the District 200 Board, and how will you know if these priorities are being met? You have the same two minutes.
I would, I would actually, I would actually probably say my, my top three priorities coming into Division 2025, I'm sorry, would probably be my three. The technology, wellness, and academics. Technology is huge because it's the way of the future that's gonna be now. I mean, it's the iPads, it's all the computers that are out there now. It's why we've updated our schools with Wi-Fi, so we can better suit our children at the school, so they have faster service, so the service is completely throughout the whole school district. Wellness would probably be just the health of our children, from, from the drugs that are in schools and alcohol. It's a huge, huge process that we need to try to keep our arms around and try to hold on to our children. And the third thing would probably be academics. I know I just was at the first, my first academics meeting last week, and we actually talked around the room for about an hour, hour and a half. People that were school board, school board members were at the meeting. There was teachers, retired teachers, there was principals. And one of the things that they kept going back to, I think, for academics was, how does our future look for us for, how do I want to put it, for science and math, I guess would probably be the biggest, too. I know we have about 400 kids again this year that we know that left Hastings School District for, for other school districts or private schools throughout the, throughout Hastings, and that those 400 kids, just me door-knocking around, some of the, some of the things I get is, it's because of the math and science. We need to update our, the way that we teach it. We need to bring better classrooms together for the technology sake, and that's, I'm sorry, and, and the technology, and that's probably the biggest thing, is the technology and the actual, the science and math is probably the hugest thing. Thank you.
Peggy, just keep going this way? Okay. Mr. Bertram will be next with his three priorities.
All right, I'll make it easy. I touched on the first one, my biggest priority. Part of, and I didn't introduce earlier what I do, I'm a commercial insurance agent, and a big part of what I work with is manufacturing, construction, transportation, those types of things. So my biggest priority is reintroducing those trades, working with the teachers and some of the shop programs and local businesses in town. And I've had some of those conversations already with different people. "Hey, what are you looking for? Would it help if we had even some, some summer help for, for some of these folks, some well-trained high school kids? Introduce them? Would you be willing to work with the schools to get them that real-world experience or to come in and kind of explain what types of careers options are out there?" And I think it's extremely important. So that'd be my number-one priority, is finding a way to partner with some of the local businesses and see if maybe they might support it financially and also technically as well, coming in the classrooms and showing those things. The second big priority I would have is, gonna be more from the budget standpoint. I'm not predicting any dire consequences or awful things happening in the near future. I think we're, we're in a decent shape, you know, historically right now. But one of the big things that's creeping up is gonna be looking at the overall big picture of health insurance and wellness, as Russ talked about. And part of that's educating everybody involved, what goes on behind the scenes. We're self-insured from a group health standpoint, so if we can improve the health of our members' utilization and find ways to improve their health as well, we can really help keep costs down in the future, which is gonna leave that money, free that up in some other areas as well. And the last thing is gonna be technology. It's there, there's no escaping it. I'm a little behind that curve as far as millennials go in technology, but it's extremely important. Figure out what's the best utilization. iPads in every classroom, I don't think that's the best idea. I think in certain applications, it makes sense, but, you know, let's see what other, other schools are doing, see what works well for them, and, you know, use their ideas and use their successes to ours. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Howell?
Well, I'm gonna echo some of the things that were already said. Technology, I kind of mentioned that in my opening statement as far as the technology programs in the schools. The partnership created with that, I've been very successful in the past at the Hutchinson High School to partner them with Alexandria Technical College and 3M to create a pipeline for the future, because in manufacturing, there's gaps in hiring qualified maintenance people. And so we went to the colleges, and they weren't getting enough students. They had 100% placement. They were, they were placing everybody that went through their programs because there wasn't a lot going through there, and manufacturing has a strong need for those people, and they're very high-paid right out of college, a two-year college. So we partnered between the colleges and the high school to create a Mechatronics program in Hutchinson. I'd like to have that as one of my priorities here in Hastings, is to create a partnership with the high school, with manufacturing, and with the colleges around to help enhance our, our system. There's also grants out there that can help with that, too, and manufacturing will also pay for some of that. Also, benchmarking would be another priority. Benchmarking what other school districts that are doing that's so successful. Apple Valley has an E3 program for STEM that they're working on, so we should be benchmarking some of the other schools around to see what they're doing that maybe we can replicate. Another thing that's really one of my passions, too, is empowering women. There's a feminism club in our high school, and I think that's very important. As someone that is in the business world myself, I see gender gaps, and it starts with educating people in the school level and changing that culture for everyone. So those are my top three priorities, would be empowering women, benchmarking, and partnering for technology improvements.
And Mr. Becker?
Well, I wrote down five, but I only got three to talk about, so I like the idea of the trade schools. In construction, there is a lack of tradespeople right now, and there will be for some time. Academics is, should be, everybody's number one. I actually have three, the three I want to talk about is the technology, mental health, and keeping the activities going at school. With teenagers, if you have kids, when they're at home and they have idle time, it's so easy just to get wrapped up with, on your phone, or Netflix, or whatever. I love the idea of all the activities we have at school. My kids take advantage of them. So that's a priority, to make sure and understand, you know, when the time comes, or if the time comes, if you have to make some decisions, let's think about the student, how is impacting our students? Technology, said very well. It's a double-edged sword. We all like it, we all want it, but we have to really understand, is it the best for us? How do we maintain it? Can we afford the upgrades to it? And then mental health. I don't know a lot about mental health, because, you know, my kids have always just been doing their thing. So if I get on the school board, one of the first things I would do is, we have a neighbor who's a special ed teacher, sit in her class and understand more about it. And I would, I would like to be educated in that. So those are three, three of my top priorities. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Hadid?
Thank you very much for that question. My three priorities would be to improve the transparency of the budget-making process, and quite honestly, the budget-cutting process. A couple of years ago, we had to go through a pretty unpleasant experience of cutting in our budget and doing some realignment of classrooms, both at the elementary, specifically at the elementary and the middle school. And while I think everybody put their best foot forward to implementation, I'd like to, we came up with a process that has more transparency and earlier opportunities for engagement. This last year, we didn't have to use that. I suspect that's not gonna be the case forever. So, and the way I would know that that was working is that we would just see those conversations happening in that mid-winter timeframe, rather than sitting there in March and April right up against the budget process. Maybe the general anxiety would be lower? Probably not. People are pretty passionate about education, and they'd hate to see their favorite programs cut. My second would be, I'd like to see our district continue to improve readiness for incoming kindergarteners. That went awfully far, much further than I would have expected in Governor Dayton's work last year, and I, I'm sure it's coming down the line. I've been in a lot of kindergarten classrooms, I occasionally sub-recess and lunch at the elementary schools, and you can tell the difference. You can tell who's ready and who's not ready to be there. And it's not academically ready, it's socially ready, it's mental health ready. And we can measure that, both on our incoming assessments and on behavior measurements that we see currently versus in the future. And then the last thing is, I, this is my engineering background, we need to initiate a comprehensive analysis of our facilities. Russ mentioned, he sat on that task force in 2009 the last time. I hate to say it, the new, the new high school, it's not really all that new anymore. So I would anticipate quite likely a capital bond in about 2019. So I would like to see us initiate a community-wide facility management plan, and we'll know if it's been accomplished. I will have one in our hand before the bond has to go out. Thank you.
And Mr. O'Brien?
My three are gonna be support teachers, engage the community, and care for the kids. Why I'm saying this, support teachers, everybody always wants us to improve academically, improve with data, with benchmarks that we can measure. I've heard school board members talk about ways we can improve the curriculum. That's a bad conversation. It just is. None of, I have a doctorate. None of us are trained in curriculum development. We employ very, very smart people in the district who can get our curriculum going in the right direction. We have a curriculum director. We have staff development. We have Mary Pash and Jen Reichel on board. We have a lot of really good initiatives going. We need to support them. Steve Jobs might have been a jerk in a lot of ways, but he was extremely on point with one observation. Let people be happy in their jobs and watch what happens. We need to support our best and brightest to allow them to do the best they can, teaching in the classrooms and providing support so that teachers achieve great, or teachers and students achieve great outcomes. Engaging the community. I've been really lucky to be part of helping to start Vision 2025. Vision 2025 is supposed to be a collaborative process with stakeholders, to engage the community, to discuss how we can improve things. The three prongs, as you've already heard, are academics, wellness, and technology. Those conversations and others like those are really important. We need help from the community to make the best decisions for our schools. And the last one, care for the kids. Sometimes we get so caught up in all the measurables and all the data and all the stuff, that we forget what's really important is the health and well-being of all those kids. The 4,700 kids that are in ALCs, special education, global languages, everything. It's all important to somebody, and it's mostly important to those kids. And caring for those kids is bottom-line really important. So those are my three goals. Support the teachers, engage the community, and make sure we always care for the kids.
And we're ready for the next question. This time, Mr. Becker, you'll be up first on this? And the question is this. How do you envision working and communicating with district leadership, school staff, community members, and other school board members?
I think whether it's a school district or a place of business, I believe there's levels of management, there's levels of people who are accountable for what they do. In my business, we have an owner, and below him are vice presidents, and below them are project managers. The project managers have the voice of the owner as well, and then there's the installers, who are the worker bees. The owner goes to the installers. I'm trying to say is, there's levels that have to work together, and everybody has to know their boundaries. I think the school district is no different. We have very good district office, a very good superintendent. The teachers are wonderful, they're smart, like Vince said. That's the brain trust. And working with them is, what I would do, I would listen. I'm a big proponent of listening and reaching out. Is there part of the question? Sorry about that. Sorry about that.
Okay, how do you envision working and communicating with district leadership, school staff, community members, and other school board members?
Okay, communication would be talking, being present at school functions, going to school things, which I normally don't, because if my kids aren't in it, I know I'd have to go, and I'd be looking forward to go. So communication on the school board, invite people to the school board as well. So I think it's just, a constant communication is what's needed, and if that's in place, it takes out a lot of gray area. Things are a lot better when issues are black and white. Thanks very much.
And you're back with us, Ms. Sedeen?
Well, interestingly enough, following the academic team meeting that Russ referred to earlier, I went and sat with Jen Reichel, who's our curriculum director, director of teaching and learning. And we were talking specifically about some communication work she needs to do to support the World's Best Workforce Report that she has to submit. And so we talked about how people get information, how they want to get information, and how they want to share information. And at the end of the conversation, other than having a nice bowl of candy, which is helpful for me at least, it's face-to-face. It's face-to-face, it's being engaged and being active. I feel like that's what I've done over the last four years of my term, and even prior to my term beginning, is I've been present. I've been present in community activities, I've been present at board meetings, I've been present at committee meetings, been present at community initiatives, youth sports events, I'm present at Cub, I'm present at Target, and I'm available to talk to people during all of those times. My home phone number is listed in the phone book, my email is linked to the school district webpage, and I read them, and I respond to them, and I talk to people, and I try and understand the root piece of what they're saying. Not necessarily the energy on top of it, but what are they actually saying, and what do they care about? And how can we bring that information forward and continue the conversation? So I would communicate by being present. Thank you.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Number one, I'd try to listen. And I try to do a lot of that now, but I'd always try to remember to listen. And you always have to remember to say thank you. The times I forget to say thank you, it always comes back and bites me. So listen, be thankful, try to respect other people. You know, we work with all the different groups and we work with each other. In Minnesota, we're known as passive-aggressive, so sometimes we shy away from confrontation and disagreement. But the disagreement and the confrontation that happens at the school board level over policy matters is important. And it's important that we try and inform ourselves when we have those issues with a good, transparent process that allows us to get the information we need and try to make good decisions. So we have to communicate well with all the stakeholders, teachers, administrators, support staff, members of the community, and others in trying to make good decisions. And then we need to take action. I have two elements in my personal life that always clashed about those two things. I'm a philosophy major from college, and I tend to try to be very thoughtful in putting together decisions. But I also was a firefighter EMT for 20 years, and you have to act. So I believe very strongly that those things can be done. You have to work hard to be very thorough in going through a process of communicating with people, and then you have to take action and own it. So I would hope to continue that process in as respectful a way as possible. Thanks.
And Mr. Roloff?
I guess, communication, the biggest thing in communication is the correct communication that we're getting out to administrators, to staff, to teachers, I'm sorry, also, and students. Students is the huge, I mean, that's what is the backbone of the school. If it's, the staff is providing, or, I'm sorry, the staff is providing our students in everyday life the way to focus on the future, I guess. So our communication needs to start out with the staff, administration. I guess the taxpayers, they deserve good communication to know what we need to do in the future, if we need to do levies and bonds. It was brought up again today about that we might have to do a bond in 2019, in a couple of years. We need to let the people know, again, what is going on with their schools. The high school is going to be 15 years old pretty soon. We just stunk, stuck $19.2 million into the school district a couple of years ago on our facilities. And if we don't have safe facilities for our kids, why do we want to send them to school if the teachers don't want to be there either? We don't want them dripping water, we don't want hazards to be there. And the last thing, I guess, is that I will support, and continue to support academics, arts, athletics, community service. Community service is a huge thing in town. I know my children are very involved in community service, if they're not helping the junior board through United Way, or if they're helping stuff at the YMCA. And I think that makes your children and some of the adults to go a lot further in life when they're actually doing the community services stuff throughout the school district and throughout the community. Thank you.
And Mr. Bertram?
Well, I'll be the first to say I don't have all the answers for everything. I'm a big believer in empowerment, because there's a lot of people, very smart people we put in charge at the high schools, middle schools, in middle school and elementary schools, that know a heck of a lot more about the education system than I ever will. So as part of that, the reason they're there is because they're good at it. So I think we need to put our faith in them, that they're going to do a good job writing those things. We communicate with them, get their feedback, and they're inside if they need our help, but also let them help guide those discussions, those directions. Because ultimately, they're the ones who know what goes on day-to-day in these places. We just get some feedback reports. So part of that is having that open, direct line with the administrators, but also teachers as well. I plan to sit in on the classrooms and just get a feel of what's going on. What are they seeing? What are the kids doing? Continue with junior achievement that I've done the last couple of years as well. Some of the other members alluded to, I'm a big proponent of face-to-face conversation, not the emails. You know, we've had some disagreements on some stuff that's come up over the summer, and one of the things I've done is met with more than one of the board members outside of the board meeting, said, hey, let's talk about it, let's understand where we're coming from. If I can understand you, put myself in your shoes, I can understand why you feel that way, or vice versa as well. So I think that's extremely important. And then the last thing, as far as, and Tim, I won't even talk about the administrators, Tim is fantastic with letting us know what's going on and being an open two-way street. The last thing is going to be with the community. I think as, again, several alluded to, if we're going to be asking for money, if we're going to ask for a bond referendum for facilities, things like that, we got to let everybody know why. Why is this important? Why does this affect them? Why should they open up their wallet and give us more of their hard-earned money to support the schools? I think a well-educated public through, you know, put in articles in paper forums, different things like that, we got to get the word out. Because if it's important to us, it's important to them, and they should know why. We need their support. Thank you.
Ms. Howe, it's back to you.
I envision working with, and communicating with the district leadership, staff, and community members the same way I communicate with everyone in my everyday job. For the district leadership, it's similar to our engineer operating committee and our global advisory group. They think, big picture. They learn the issues, they understand what they need to, to make the best decisions with the information available. So district looking at the big picture, working and communicating with them on setting strategic plans and direction. And then as far as working with the communities, they're like working with our customers. So they're our business partners, we need to be getting their input and their involvement to determine what's important and what their needs are. And then working with the staff. That would be, you know, like working with our employees. You know, learn from them, get their suggestions. They're closest to the process, so they understand more, and they probably have the best ideas and suggestions on what to do moving forward, because they're closest to the process. So I really kind of envision working with them the same way I work with everyone. It's not a one person, it's a whole team, it's a whole collaborative effort. It's understanding what's out there, what needs to be done, and making sure you communicate by whatever means possible. Thanks.
Okay, we have arrived at our final question here, and each of the candidates will have one minute in which they can answer this. We're running a little bit ahead of ourselves, actually, which is remarkable. I could sing, but I think you'd rather hear from them, right? You know? So the final question, you have one minute to answer. And Mr. Bertram, you will be our first one this time, is to conclude our forum tonight. What message do you want to send to the parents of students in our schools, and to that significant portion of the community who do not have students in our schools? Would you like me to repeat that?
No, we're good.
We're good? Okay.
I got to say, I kind of wanted to hear Jan sing instead. I think it'd be more interesting.
You really don't.
Well, I can probably say I'm a father of three boys, all very young, just entering the public school system, and you know, they will be going through the ranks. So making sure that what they're walking into is a well-established, very good, strong education system is extremely important. Just like any other parent out there, I want to make sure my kids are set up for success. So a strong education system is a huge part of that. I want to make sure they're going to have the opportunities they need to participate in sports, or other activities, and clubs, and things like that. But I also want to make sure they're prepared for the future. On the flip side of the coin, our responsibility also lies to the taxpayers. It's your money. If you don't have kids going anymore, we want to make sure that we're spending your money wisely, no different than I would budget for groceries and budget for things like that. It's your money, I want to protect it just like I would my own. So if we're going to do it, I want to make sure it makes sense, that we're going to get good value out of it, and that it's worth the cause of supporting. Thank you.
Ms. Howe?
All right, in closing, you know, I would really like to be an advocate for everyone as a school board member. I think I could work very well with the existing school board. They have a lot of good initiatives already in place. I was fortunate enough to go to the Vision 2025 meeting that they had put on before. First time ever that I had seen a community, well, a school district do something interactive with the community like that. They also have done some other interactive things with the community. There was a recent open house for the parents at the high school, where we got to follow our kids' schedule. So I see some positive initiatives that have already been created, where they're bridging the community with the school district, and they're increasing that communication. So I'd really like to be part of that momentum that's already going. I think I would work well with that. And I'd like to listen to the community, and the staff, and the teachers, and just make a positive difference. So I hope you'll let me be an advocate for you. Thank you.
Mr. Becker, your final remarks?
I think the message I want to get to the parents is, when I look back at when our kids were in McCawth, I have the same concerns as I do now that my kids are in high school. I want a school that's safe, that I'm getting a good education, I got a lot of activities, that I'm in a good community. So my message to the parents would be, we have a really good thing at Hastings. Let's, you know, we have to get behind as taxpayers as well, but let's get behind our teachers and board. Message to the community would be, we're taking care of your money the best we can. It's a responsibility of all, of all of us, to pay taxes and to present our families and neighbors with a really great school system. Thank you.
And Ms. Sedeen?
I would want to say to parents, thank you. Thank you for sending your kids to the Hastings schools. There's a lot of choices. I feel like the Hastings schools is a good opportunity, and is a good choice, and reaches a range of students. And I appreciate having had the opportunity to serve inside of that school district, and I would like to do it for another four years, and I would hope you support me in that. To people who don't currently have children in the school district, I believe there's so much support in Hastings amongst people who don't have kids right now in the school district. It's kind of the same thing. Thank you. Thank you for your support to the district, thank you for your support to levies and bonds, thank you for coming to school plays, thank you for coming to school Christmas pageants, thank you for donating books to the library, coming in and sorting those books. Whatever the case might be, this community constantly gives and supports our public schools, and I want to thank them all for that. I believe I've done a good job to date representing that district, representing the community to the district, and I want to continue that. And thank you very much for this opportunity.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Keep caring, have hope, and celebrate. It's obvious to me by those of you that turned out tonight, and this is a big number, and by the taping for the television, that Hastings continues to care very much about its schools. Please keep that up. It's wonderful, and it pays dividends exponentially going forward. Hope. I do these site visits, I do class visits all over the place, and last year I was in a second-grade classroom where all the kids were paired up, and they were editing each other's writing. That was phenomenal, it was sublime, it was surreal. Second-grade kids, all of them, editing each other's writing. There is so much going on in the schools to be hopeful for. And the third thing is celebrate. There's so much that goes on in our schools that we need to take stock of and celebrate. Take the time to acknowledge the good things that happen in schools. They happen all the time, in all the different sectors. Celebrate the good stuff. Thanks.
Mr. Roloff?
All right, this is something, when I actually go door knocking, this is my final words, I guess, to every homeowner when I talk to them. I just said, the district needs a solid foundation in education, and a solid foundation on the Hastings school board. I'm asking for your voter support on November 3rd. I'm a strong advocate for public education, for our community, and mostly the students in District 200. I am committed to working on behalf of our students and families, and thank you to the residents of Hastings for continued support of education in our community, and as my kids would say, Raider Nation is on, lives on. Thank you very much.
We want to thank the candidates for your time this evening, and for sharing your visions and your views with all of us. and your views with all of us. You've made the decisions much harder, that much we'll say also. To close this evening, just want to remind everybody to be sure to vote on Tuesday, November 3rd. Thank you.[1773.76][1773.76]